The views, information, and opinions expressed during the following program are solely those of the individuals involved and do not necessarily represent the views of Access Communications, its representatives, or its employees.
Okay, thank you, Roberta. We'll call this February 14th, Valentine's Day, regular council meeting to order. And I should maybe say that I'm always looking at Roberta and the radio and the paper, but there's a reason for that because we have a screen the size of the wall behind Roberta. Okay, so this evening, we're pleased to have under presentations, Action on Smoking and Health by Stephanie Toz. So Stephanie, please take it away.
For sure. I'm just gonna go ahead and share my screen if that's possible.
Okay.
You should be able to now, Stephanie. Try that.
Okay. There we go. Okay, there we go. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to present. I guess I'm joining you from Winnipeg today, so thank you. I'm a policy specialist for ASH, and I'll be providing a brief presentation that will be discussing opportunities for comprehensive smoking and vaping restrictions in Estevan, and we'll welcome your questions afterwards. So first of all, I'd like to commend your council for making public health a priority during the pandemic, and we encourage you to do so in the future. So just a brief background, ASH, or Action on Smoking and Health, was founded in Edmonton in 1979 and is one of Canada's leading tobacco control organizations with staff across the four Western provinces. So ASH has provided local, provincial, national, and global leadership on tobacco control with a primary focus on raising public awareness and education, community mobilization, applied research, and advancement of public policy measures. So I just want to start off by highlighting some quick tobacco facts. So tobacco places is an enormous burden on health and our quality of life. Tobacco kills 50,000 Canadians annually, which represents about 20% of all deaths, and about 1 million Canadians are currently suffering from the consequences related to tobacco use. Sadly, about one in two every long-term smokers will die of an illness resulting from tobacco use, and secondhand smoke kills approximately 1,000 Canadians annually. So as you may know, there's been an explosive rise in vaping, particularly among youth in the recent years. So according to the last national survey, over 400,000 Canadian youth vaped in the last 30 days, and a great majority of these adolescents will develop a long-term addiction to nicotine. Children and youth who vape are three times more likely to pick up smoking. And recent studies indicate that for every one adult who stops smoking through vaping, 80 youth vapers become smokers. Almost 100% of youth who vape have started vaping by using flavored products. So modeling is an essential element of childhood development, and it's a very effective learning mechanism. So if we model healthy behaviors to kids, we're more likely to get healthy kids, but also vice versa. So we know that parental modeling can influence youth smoking behavior, but social modeling is just as influential. So for example, to a five-year-old, smoking is smoking whether it involves tobacco, nicotine, cannabis, cigarettes, joints, or vaping products. The more smoking cues that a child receives during their childhood, the more likely they are to become smokers themselves. So published evidence reveals that social modeling can be just as influential as parental modeling. Therefore, comprehensive public restrictions in all forms of smoking and vaping are needed to help keep youth tobacco and nicotine free for life. Vaping, cannabis, and tobacco also have the potential to re-normalize public smoking and therefore reverse any things that have been made in reducing tobacco use, particularly among youth. So on these next couple of slides, I'll present a number of options for councils to consider. So bylaws should include provisions to prohibit smoking in all public places, parks, and recreation spaces. Children frequent public events and recreation spaces, including outdoor markets, parks, trails, and beaches. You should be fully protected from smoking and vaping in these public places. However, typically not all parks and recreation spaces have sports fields and playgrounds. So all parks are frequented by youth in many municipalities, have prohibited smoking in all parks and all recreation places. The bylaw should also extend to outdoor public events, including markets or farmers' markets, since children and youth also frequent these. These events are also typically crowded, and secondhand smoke is harmful for individuals that have asthma or other allergies. One thing to note as well, cannabis vaping should not be exempted from the bylaws, and we encourage the extension of the definition of vaping to include all substances and liquids that can be vaped. So smoking bans should also be extended to group living facilities. Residents are often elderly or have heart conditions that can be aggravated by exposure to secondhand smoke. So councils should consider banning smoking in all public housing units to provide further protection to vulnerable populations. And then a growing number of municipalities are also looking at banning smoking in hotel motel rooms. Many hotel motel rooms already ban smoking themselves, but others have not. So putting this measure in place also ensures that all workers are protected and create a level playing field for businesses. One thing that ASH encourages is councils applying licensing fees to tobacco, vaping, and cannabis retailers. So these fees can be redirected to youth education initiatives, retailer training, communication programs, and to cover the cost of enforcement. One example is retailer training and enforcement to prevent illegal retail sales to minors. And then also, we encourage signage. Signage is a huge part of enforcement, and no smoking area should be clearly visible. So how can ASH help? ASH recognizes that municipalities, there's a lot of responsibilities that are downloaded onto them. So ASH has a model smoke-free bylaw that helps address all of these issues. And this slide just sort of summarizes the checklist of what we would consider gold standard bylaw. We also have a policy hub at ash.ca, so this lists all applicable policies and resources available to each of the Western provinces, and includes a listing of policy resources categorized by municipalities, school districts, and post-secondary institutions. So I'd encourage you to visit ash.ca, and you can see a listing of all of the bylaws and all of the different comparisons. So just to finish up, smoking rates are at an all-time low in Canada. Public smoking restrictions are an important part of our overall success. We can't allow these gains to be reversed through re-normalization of public smoking and vaping. So thank you very much. I now welcome any questions.
Okay, thank you so much, Stephanie. We'll open the floor for any questions from members of council. I guess we don't have any questions. That means that you did a great job, Stephanie, and thank you so much for that.
Thank you. Have a good rest of your evening.
Okay, thank you. You as well. Could we have a motion, please, to accept that presentation by Stephanie? Thank you. Consul Clark, seconded by Consul Ford. All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Next, could we have a motion, please, to adopt the agenda as presented? Thank you. Consul Varova, seconded by Consul Wolizer. Any questions or comments? If not, all in favor? Carried. Thank you. Next, could we have a motion, please, to accept the minutes of the council meeting held on January 24th, '22? Thank you. Consul Frank, seconded by Consul Cernick. Any questions or comments on that? If not, all in favor? Carried. Thank you. Next, under Original Communications Delegations and Petitions, we have from GFL, the Part Report for December 21 and January 22. Could we have a motion, please, to accept both of those? Consul Ford, seconded by, thank you, Consul Wolizer. Ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Next, under Original Communications Delegations and Petitions, we have from Southeast Saskatchewan Regional Director, Request Support for Healthcare. What's the wish of council on that? Consul Varova.
Thank you, your worship. When I was reading this, I just had a few questions because it kind of is more based on the smaller towns. And at first, I thought, yes, 100%, we need to support healthcare in the smaller areas. But on the same breath, some of this, like for an ambulance and that kind of thing, I'd almost like to know what their proposal is. It's easy to say fix it, but how do you fix it? How do you have the staff? Like, you get some ambulances in these communities and stuff. How do you have the staff? When I worked out in smaller facilities, they relied on some really great volunteers. So I'd be interested to hear from this person that wrote the letter, or from some of the smaller communities, how are they managing right now? Has it been the volunteers are not coming forward? Are the volunteers cut? I just wasn't really clear to me what were they asking? Were they asking for the provincial government to actually fund fully operational ambulances in each community, or is it only so many 150 kilometers, 100 kilometers? Like, I wasn't quite sure. I was trying in my head to figure out which small community would have that ambulance service and which already has it. Hospital closures, another one, 100%. I think if there's a hospital in a small community, they're very valuable or valuable, and we need them to still be there. So I would definitely be in favor of that. But I'd also like to hear what are the solutions for having a hospital? Because in order to have a hospital, you have to have a doctor. And we've already seen that this is a provincial issue, if not a Canadian issue, that we cannot get the medical people that we need in each facility. So, I mean, we have some small communities that have done very well having a doctor once a week, that kind of thing, maybe twice a week. I think that's something that they definitely need to continue on. And so I just wasn't sure if the whole entire letter basically was something that I had enough information on to support, but I was interested to hear what the rest of council felt.
Okay, well, thank you for that, Consul Varova. And perhaps what we could do, because I think we have time, is take your questions, send them to Ms. Jackson, Pat Jackson, and get an answer back, and then make a more informative decision. And perhaps we even want to add any concerns that we have locally to this.
Yeah, that would be actually a good idea, your worship, because in my mind, we have some of the same issues, but our issue is not being able to retain the specialty of healthcare services and professionals that we need. And so sometimes by us retaining that, maybe we're harming the smaller communities. But maybe we need to find a way to work together, and maybe we need to have a more standard amount of kilometers where an ambulance situation has to be. Ambulance bay must be fully staffed, you know, whether that's 100 kilometers or 150 kilometers. I don't have the answer for that, but that's where I think we just need to have a little bit of consistency. I feel that this letter is full of emotion, but I don't know if it has all the facts that I needed to get behind it.
Okay, thank you, Consul Varova. I think that's a fair comment. Consul Ford?
Thanks, your worship. I also agree with Consul Varova. And a concern I had, in this letter was stated a number of times, they're overwhelmed due to insufficient staff numbers, and staffing issues is a problem. And it is, it's a problem North America-wide. But some of the problem isn't the Ministry of Health or anything, it's an education problem as well. I mean, there's nursing programs being cut all over the country. It's not just the health program that's doing people wrong or anything like that, because it's the education program as well. People don't want to go to school for that many years, or choosing the trades, or whatever it might be. So I think education needs to be looked at in this as well, and it doesn't feel like that was listed in there at all.
Okay, well, thank you for that. So perhaps we could have a motion then, Consul Varova. We'll have your and Consul Ford's questions sent to her, and then we'll ask her if we can add any of our local concerns to this, and then send it to Soma.
Yeah, 100%. Or the other option is, after we talk to them, we may even decide that this is a cities versus rural issue. And during Soma, we all know we break up into the cities, and then the towns and villages go into the other area. Maybe that's two different issues. And we need to get behind a letter that is concerning to whether healthcare issues in the cities versus the healthcare issues in rural areas.
Yeah, and that as well is a fair comment. The issues they have in the smaller areas are not quite the same. Some are, but not always. They don't necessarily reflect the concerns in the city as well.
Yeah, but I would like to make the motion then that we return with a letter or email that will summarize some of our concerns. And I know I will put my questions into email form tomorrow for the city clerk. And if maybe the rest of council would like to follow suit and do that as well, then we can come up with a few items of clarification for Mrs. Jackson.
Jackson. Okay, well, we appreciate that. We'll collate all of those concerns. We'll send them to Pat, ask her if we can add some of our specific concerns to that as well, and then send it all. So have we got a second for that? Consul Ford, thank you. Any further questions or comments? If not, all in favor? Carried. Thank you. Okay, next, we have from Original Communications Delegations and Petitions, from Amy Harrelson, the Swiss Coordinator, to Estevan City Council. Estevan Swiss Transition Services and Southeast Newcomer Services would like to request the use of wall space at the Estevan Leisure Center, preferably a high-traffic area, in order to display our anti-racism campaign. Our display would consist of anti-racism pledges signed by our participants and the general public, along with signage identifying our organization. We would like to have the display up towards the end of February until the end of March '22, which will overlap March 21st, which is the International Day for the Elimination of Racial Discrimination. Our hope is to promote anti-racism discourse and awareness within our community, as well as to establish our organization and our community as a safe space for every individual. We see this as an opportunity to encourage our community to come together and be united against racism. As we have limited and specific foot traffic through our building, we are unable to reach a community on a large scale. By utilizing space at the Estevan Leisure Center where large numbers of diverse members of the community frequent, we would be able to better promote our anti-racism message throughout the community. If you have any questions, please contact me. Otherwise, I look forward to receiving your decision. I have included an example of what our pledges look like below. They're about six inches by six inches. Best regard, Amy Harrelson and Madison Shonsby, Transition Coordinator. So what's the wish of council? Okay, Consul Wolizer?
I think we should support their request, as well as participate alongside them, and have them work along our social media team as well, as partner with the library for a matching display on international elimination of racism and discrimination.
Okay, thank you, Consul Wolizer. Any other comments? Consul Ford?
I also support this decision, and I would like to request that maybe we think about putting it somewhere near affinity, just in a rank area somewhere, because I think the number was 67% in a study done in 2018. There was 67% of a rise in racial activity in sports, and it's something that is talked about greatly right now. So I think it'd be good to place it somewhere where sporting events are and for people to see.
Okay, thank you, Consul Ford. Any other comments? If not, Consul Wolizer, would you be willing to make that motion? Thank you. And Consul Ford, would you second? Okay. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Carried. Thank you very much. Next, under Original Communications Delegations and Petitions, we have from Spruce Ridge School Co-op, Community Space Funding and Funding Support Request. On behalf of Spruce Ridge School, our students, our staff, our parents, and our SCC members, I'm writing this regarding our amphitheater project. We want a place where our students and members of the community can gather to practice, perform, and view arts performances in an outdoor setting. So we have decided to build a large concrete amphitheater on our playground. This amphitheater will serve as outdoor classroom, formal performance area, meeting area, informal gathering place, a space for various community groups, a unique feature in our community. Due to concerns around the spread of COVID-19 and other viruses, outdoor learning spaces are in greater demand. Our school and community have numerous outdoor sports venues, but no outdoor performance areas. Our teachers and students enjoy taking advantage of opportunities to go outside for learning activities. They're excited at the prospect of having another area to gather and learn together in the fresh air and sunshine. Our students and school community will benefit greatly from this project. We currently have 358 students from K to 12. Teachers in every grade could use the amphitheater for arts education and other subjects. Extracurricular groups, such as our school choir or drama club, could use it as well. The wider community of Estevan would also benefit from this project outside of school hours. There are numerous community or church groups and organizations in our community who would welcome to use this space for meetings, practices, performances, et cetera. Then they show a picture of that. They've already got a contractor, five-star concrete. The quote is for $61,050, including all materials and costs. They would like to start this in the spring or early summer of '22. To date, the school has received $2,850 in donations from local businesses and individuals. The school has also fundraised over $20,000 for the project. We would appreciate a letter of support from the city of Estevan to help us with our application for co-op community spaces funding. Thank you for your time and consideration. Any further questions? Sheri Haverstock, Principal, Spruce Ridge School. So what's the wish of council? Consul Frank?
Thanks, your worship. Ms. Haverstock had approached me a little while ago about bringing this letter to council just to get some support. Obviously, she's not looking for any financial support at this point. She just wants, in order for the grant application, she's looking at that the city would agree to a project to be built and would support this in our community, which personally, I think is something we would be just ecstatic to have, in my opinion. I would be thrilled to see something like this go forward. So I think she's just looking for grant funding, and if we can get behind it. And so I would give the recommendation that we would.
Okay, thank you, Consul Frank. Go ahead.
I think this, thank you, I think this also aligns really well with what we've been talking about with our downtown revitalization and everything we spoke about with Doug Griffiths. I know the term amphitheater has come up a number of times in various things, so I give kudos to Spruce Ridge School for starting this.
Okay, thank you. Consul Clark?
Thanks, your worship. If Travis has bid that motion, I'll second that motion.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments from council? Consul Varova?
I just wanted to say also that with COVID and everything else that's been going on and getting the kids outside, I think just in the future, this is something that will get the kids excited to be outside, especially with the music. And it will be a community thing. It just wouldn't be for just Spruce Ridge School. So I just don't see any downwards, anything negative about this project at all. I think it's a great project, and kudos to Sheri for starting that. So I would support it as well.
Okay, thank you, Consul Varova. Okay, ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Thank you very much. Next, under Written Reports of Committees, we have from the Estevan Public Library, the Minutes of January 18th. Do we have a motion for those, please? Thank you, Consul Clark, seconded by Consul Varova. Any questions or comments? Okay, go ahead. Consul Wolizer, then Consul Varova.
Thank you, your worship. Just to highlight from the minutes, that the library is hosting a silent auction made up of arts and crafts donated by the community from February 22nd to 26th, and their event will be available both online and in person. And some of the artwork is already being put up in the library if people want to stop by.
Okay, thank you for that, Consul Wolizer. Consul Varova?
Thank you, worship. I was also just going to highlight the fact that the public library actually has an outreach program that gets out to seniors in our community. And I know at Creighton Lodge, we're very thankful for that. So I just wanted to say thank you to the library and their programmers, because they not only come and bring books and audiobooks to the seniors, they also volunteer their time for two times a month. One is for tech. So they've actually helped a few of our seniors be able to figure out the iPhone, the iPad, be able to FaceTime with family members that haven't been able to make it down. And then they also have a reading and reminiscing hour. So they come and they read, and that's really important for the seniors, because some of them, their eyesight isn't as good as it once was. And so being able to listen to some of those stories and then reminisce with their peers about what's being read is really interesting. It's been good to see the seniors interact with the library. So I just wanted to highlight how important the library is to our community in many different ways.
Absolutely. Thank you for that, Consul Varova. Any further questions, comments? If not, all in favor? Carried. Thank you. Next, under Written Reports of Committees, we have from the Southeast Transportation Planning Committee, the Minutes of January 25th. Could we have a motion, please, to accept those? Thank you, Consul Clark, seconded by Consul Wolizer. Consul Clark, anything you'd like to add?
Yes, just to follow up, I know we've had requests sort of to do, perhaps, there are small projects that you could put in for your community or for the area. And one of them was perhaps to do a turning lane in a spot. One of the issues that came up is the town of Arcola, they wanted slower traffic, turning lanes. When they did that, it actually became into the safety side. When the department highways came along, they started removing, or they're going to remove access roads and do that. So a little caution that when we're doing something, if it's for your city or town, to make sure that you are behind it, because you may open up a can of worms where you think you're just putting in a turning lane, and you might end up losing all the access to the whole area because it doesn't meet the safety of today. So if there is anything that comes up, make sure that the communities come back to the councils and that they know exactly what they could be into, because when the department highways, engineering, and traffic study gets into it, they're going to fix it, but they're going to fix everything that's involved with that. So just if we are doing anything, it needs to come back to the town or the city to make sure they are behind it. Thank you.
Okay, good point. Thank you for that, Consul Clark. Town of Arcola, I was brought up not far from there, and I remember someone that had been drinking heavily hit that soldier on Main Street. Thank goodness, he's still standing strong, but it's a wonder they didn't kill themselves. Anyway, all in favor? Carried. Thank you. Okay, next, under Written Reports of Committees, we have from the Estevan Humane Society, the Minutes of January 17th. Thank you, Consul Cernick, seconded by Consul Ford. Any questions or comments there, Consul Cernick?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that, you know, the Humane Society lives on donations and striving for that. They're going to be hosting their Whiskies Wine Gala coming up on March 19th at the Exhibition Hall, so watch for tickets for that. Crossroads is going to be the main event playing there, so that's going to be a good night for sure with them there. And then also on the Humane Society, I wanted to give a special shout out to Randy and Sheila McGilkey, who just recently donated a new washer and dryer to the Humane Society down there. So, I mean, that's all good stuff, so.
Absolutely. Thank you, Consul Cernick. Thank you to the McGilkey family, and the Humane Society does a great job in our community. They absolutely do. Any other questions or comments? If not, all in favor? Carried. Thank you. Next, under Executive Reports, we have from the city clerk, Resolution of Funding Extension. We'd like to extend the coal transition assistance. What's the wish of council on this? I'll just say a I'll just, uh, say a few words here. The coal transition funding was originally approved and given to create investments in economic activity and development to maintain the quality of life Saskatchewan residents with the impact created transitioning away from coal-generated electricity. The original agreement expires March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three. So that, uh, the committee would like to extend that. So what's the wish of council? Councilor Vroba?
Thank you, Worship. I was just curious, is this something that originally, when they signed it, totally be twenty-twenty-three? Because it's expected to transition out of coal by twenty-thirty. So I was kinda shocked with twenty-twenty-three, because I thought we would've had till twenty-thirty to be able to use the coal transition funding?
Yeah, you're absolutely right. That would only make sense, that you would continue this program up till thirty, so unfortunately, for whatever reason, they only had it to twenty-three. So I would think as we get closer, Councilor Vroba, that it will be extended again.
Okay, so I'll, I'll make the recommendation that we do, of course, go for a extension and hopefully that, um, yeah, they'll be in agreement with that too, so.
Okay, thank you for that. So that's a motion?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, City Manager?
Uh, thank you, Worship. Just to clarify, this doesn't increase the amount of funding, it just extends the timeline for us to allocate it to projects, so we don't have to rush it, uh, before twenty-twenty.
Right, yeah, no, I knew it wasn't gonna extend or give us more money, but, um, this is gonna be a good thing if we do extend it, because we would possibly lose the funding or not have access to it.
Well, that was, that was the worry, and that's a good point, that we had to spend it or lose it. And of course, a lot of thought goes into the, these monies before they get spent, or, and before they get allocated. So that's why the request was made to extend, and we appreciate council agreeing with that.
Yeah, and I think it's a good thing that the money wasn't all spent in a rush just to spend it.
Exactly.
I think it shows that some thought and processes have been put in place, so I think it's a good thing to be able to extend it.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Vroba. Councilor Frank?
Thanks, Your Worship, and I just wanted to make sure it's also extended that this is not necessarily the city of Estevan agreeing with the loss of coal. This is the simple fact that we have already been told the two of our plants, one just shut down, another one will go down in the next few years. We're seeing that transition whether we like it or not, so we'll take whatever assistance we can get.
Exactly, and yeah, the federal government were still, as you are well aware of, uh, trying to work with them to extend it well past two thousand and thirty, and we'll see where that goes. Councilor Cernick?
And just on a positive note about it all, is, uh, I noticed that number, number four, Unit Four was shut down in early December, and if you look at the smokestacks out there, it's already back running.
Exactly. In the colder weather, they still need coal. In Alberta, with their wind, I think they had two thousand, roughly two thousand megawatts in the province of wind and solar, and they could only use a small fraction, depending on the weather and the conditions and the amount of sunlight. So coal still is relevant, absolutely. Okay, all in favor?
I need a second.
Oh, City Clerk?
I need a second.
Oh, I thought, okay, yeah, there we go. Councilor Frank, thank you. All in favor? Carrie, thank you. That was a test, City Clerk. You're on top of, you're on top, you pastor. Okay, next, under executive reports, we have from the tax assessor, the list of land in arrears. And, uh, the recommendation is by council resolution to remove any property which owes less than half of the previous year's levy from the listing, and the properties are bolded. So if we could, uh, have that agreement from council, that would be great. Councilor Cernick? You'll make that motion? Thank you. Councilor Vroba, you'll second?
I will second, and I just wanted to also put it out there that I don't, I'm sure most people know this, but to get onto our prepayment plan, so that they can start where they make monthly payments, instead of having to come up with the whole entire amount in either January to June or July when you pay your taxes, but you can actually come down to the city, have the paperwork filled out, and then we will actually take out from your bank account monthly an equalized payment, so the same as you do with your SaaS power, SaaS energy. And I think by doing that would help a lot of families be able to afford their taxes.
Absolutely, thank you for that clarification, good point. Okay, uh, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Okay, next, under executive reports, we have the building permit report for January twenty-second. Could we have a motion, please, to accept that? Thank you, Councilor Walezer, seconded by Councilor Clark, thank you. Ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie. Next, under executive reports, we have from the Water Service's manager, the water quality report for January twenty-second. Could we have a motion, please, for that? Thank you, Councilor Cernick, seconded. Thank you, Councilor Walezer. Uh, City Manager, did we get that aluminum issue taken care of?
I believe Water Treatment Manager has, uh, contractors looking at different chemical uses to correct it. Uh, I can get an update for council at the next meeting.
Okay, if you would, please, that would be great. Thank you so much. All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Okay, next, under introduction of bylaws, we have bylaw twenty-twenty-two dash twenty-fifty-two for first reading, solid waste amendment to commercial receptacles. And City Manager, basically what this is, uh, a lot of these do not have the wooden structure around them, so we're going to take that away, correct?
Uh, yes, Your Worship. From understanding with the, what the research the City Clerk had found, uh, this bylaw has not been reviewed since, I believe, the ninety, eighties or nineties. At this time, a lot of the commercial bins were hand-bombed by bag, so it was imperative that you had some sort of structure hiding that area. Most commercial areas are now switched to bins, either through any one of the contractors and are more sightly, and actually the wooden structures around them actually restrict access to some of those trucks. So, uh, it hasn't generally been enforced, because it hasn't really been an issue, so, uh, we thought it was time to bring this, um, bylaw to the forefront for council to review.
Okay, thank you, City Manager. From time to time, we like to update our bylaws, and here's a, a good example. Thank you. Councilor Frank?
Thanks, Your Worship. Um, I support this, and, and having worked in that industry, I've seen those, those enclosures be built out of very cheap materials, they end up getting destroyed by the large trucks. Um, and City Manager, that the intended purpose of them no longer really exists, and instead having a nice clean bin is, is just the simpler way to go. Um, a lot of times, those enclosures end up just gathering garbage as well, so I think this is a much cleaner way to go. Within this bylaw, we have written that, that those bins have to be main, well-maintained, and I think that's the simple solution, so.
Okay, uh, thank you for that, uh, Councilor Frank. And Gerald, you'll make the motion for that?
Yes, I'll make the motion.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilor Clark?
Thanks, Your Worship. Does, does this replace all of eight?
Yes.
Okay, it says it's going to include inclusion in there?
There's an inclusion at the bottom.
To be amended with the included, that would mean it would be included into eight, or would it just replace all of eight?
It's gonna become eight.
It's gonna become eight, okay. So section eight will be all gone.
And then it'll be replaced with whatever.
Okay, I'll make that, I'll second.
Yeah, for clarification. Thank, you'll second that, Councilor Clark? Thank you. And Councilor Vroba, did you have a question?
Thank you, Worship. I was just gonna say, this is something that I've had a complaint coming from a concerned citizen over the last couple of years, and I think this is a good decision, because I have driven around and seen a few have really nice fences, put in the time and money and put that in there, and so they can still have that, they don't have to take it down. And then there's some that just didn't have any. So it didn't really seem fair that we had this bylaw but weren't enforcing it, and so I think this was a really good action for the city to take, and I would be in favor of that as well.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Vroba. Councilor Frank?
Uh, thanks, Worship. The one other thing I just thought I'd add to that, too, Councilor Vroba, is there's so many areas in back alleys and things where an enclosure is just not feasible, so it just does not, it, it doesn't work, it would make going through the back alleys much harder anyway, so this is definitely.
Okay, thank you for that, Councilor Frank. Uh, Councilor Vroba?
Thank you, Worship. Yeah, we're gonna go back and forth with Councilor Frank. I was just wondering if Councilor Frank was gonna mention that if there is an, an unsightly bin, you can still phone it in and you can still, truthfully, I would recommend that you actually just talk to the business owner themselves and mention that their bin is unsightly, and maybe they can work with the provider. We have, I think, two different providers in the city of Estevan, and maybe they could work with that company to bring a more cleaner, nicer-looking bin. I think a lot of them take pride in their name, according to what Councilor Frank has told us. And so, yeah, I think, I think working with the companies, working with the garbage companies and the business owner themselves, will be able to still have a really nice, clean area around the garbages.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Vroba. Uh, Councilor Frank, did you want to reply?
Sure, I'll rebut to that. Yes, I agree with you, Councilor Vroba. Um, and I believe both companies have their phone numbers on all their bins, and I think they would very much appreciate knowing that one of their bins is in poor condition, because they, they do take pride, that's their advertising, so I think that both, both companies would appreciate that, so.
Okay, thank you.
No, I'm good.
Okay, good. All in, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Uh, next, under introduction of bylaws, we'd like to give first reading to bylaw twenty-twenty-two, twenty-fifty-three, animal control bylaw, uh, first reading. And City Clerk, we just have a few changes, updates, uh, such, such as excessive barking, howling, uh, that type of thing, uh, to add. Nothing too serious, but just basically updating the bylaw, correct?
That's correct, Your Worship.
Okay, thank you, City Clerk. Uh, what's the wish of council on this one? Councilor Cernick? Thank you. And seconded by Councilor Ford. Any further questions or comments? Okay, good. Councilor Vroba, then.
I know, I got a lot of questions tonight. I was just wondering, is it possible to have on our website where people could actually apply to have a license for their dogs? I feel like a lot more people would license their dogs if there was an actual form that I could fill in and maybe scan in my paperwork to show that my dogs have been, um, vaccinated, and then I would be able to get my license. I hear from different people that one of the reasons their pets are not licensed is because they don't have time to come down to City Hall Monday to Friday, eight to four-thirty. So I feel like if there was something online that we could do this, I, I just feel like we'd get more people.
Okay, uh, thank you for that. City Clerk?
Uh, Your Worship, to Councilor Vroba, um, the only issue might be the tag.
Could we mail it to them?
I don't know, if we can check into it.
Yeah, I was just saying, we could mail the tag, because I know what you mean, to get the rabies tag, and if we could mail them one, and maybe that's a dollar charge, right? We have a dollar fee to do it online, you just put the cost back on them. A lot of people will pay the administration fee to have the convenience of not having to come down here.
Okay, thank you, uh, Councilor Vroba. We'll see if we can't make that, uh, work. Thank you for that. Councilor Walezer?
Thank you, Your Worship. Just a question about soliciting feedback. Have we given this first draft to the Humane Society? Can we do that prior to the second reading?
Absolutely, that's a good point for further feedback. Thank you for that. Councilor Ford?
Thanks, Your Worship. Just to Councilor Vroba, there is an online application, you just have to print it and then fill it out. And it did, there was an email address on the bottom of it at one point. Oh, it's not on there anymore, but.
It's down there, I don't think.
Oh, I guess, yeah.
Set scanning everything in. I could try.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
Okay, we'll see if we can refine that anyway. Thank you both for that. Okay, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Uh, next, under public hearings and reports, we have none this evening. Giving notice, we have none this evening. motions from, uh, committee, we have from the City Treasurer, the BID purchase of the Cal Tire property. That information, uh, property listed for four hundred and fifty thousand, with four twenty being the actual selling price. Bid paid one seventy-five, one hundred and seventy-five thousand. The city contributed two hundred and forty-five thousand. Okay, the land titles associated with these properties have been transferred, with the city of Estevan now being listed as sole owner. You have lot nine to ten, block eighteen, where the Cinder Block Cal Tire building is. You've got lot eleven, block fourteen, which is a vacant lot, that's assessed at sixty thousand seven hundred, and I should say the Cal Tire building was two ninety-two, two hundred. You have lot twelve, block fourteen, assessed at a hundred and thirty-one thousand seven hundred, that's that wooden shed. Lot thirteen, block fourteen, that's assessed at ninety thousand seven hundred, vacant lot. And then you have lot fourteen, block fourteen, assessed at two hundred and five thousand three hundred, a thousand sixty-four square foot house and detached garage. Uh, that's for information. Any other comments? Uh, Councilor Clark?
Thanks, Your Worship. Was there a, a portion of the GST that we were not going to get back on that sale?
Well, City Manager?
Thank you, Councilor Clark. Through the legal, we are exempt from GST, because we get it back, so it was, it wasn't included in the sale transfer price of legal.
Okay, any other questions? Councilor Frank?
Uh, yes, thanks, Your Worship. I, I guess I just wanted to make sure we maybe commented a little bit on what the intended purpose of the, of the purchase, which was through bid, and, and then to us is, um, obviously getting rid of some old decrepit buildings that are not ideal for downtown is gonna be a wonderful asset, but then looking at what could potentially go there, whether it's city-owned or not city-owned, because I think there's a lot of belief out there that it'll be a city-owned facility, and that's not necessarily the case either. We're looking at development options through economic development or anything like that, and, um, open all kinds of wild possibilities, but certainly something that could potentially recoup this cost would also be a wonderful goal. But that was just something I wanted to make sure was out there, because I think a lot of people assume that we're gonna own it, and this money's just gone, and that's not necessarily the case. We just wanted to make sure we had a little bit of control over what does go there, so.
Exactly. Thank you, Councilor Frank. And City Clerk, did you want to motion? Oh, sorry, Councilor Vroba?
Sorry, I didn't want you to pass me over. Thank.
I always slip over.
I, I actually, um, just felt that a lot of people had a lot of great ideas, just from reading on social media, talking to some people. I had a gentleman call me out of the blue the other day and tell me that, uh, making that Cal Tire building area itself, right behind TD Bank, you know, cement it over, make it into a parking lot, and then lease it back over to the federal government, because we all know. And so a lot of people were concerned that the city was gonna buy an area, put a parking lot there, and then give it to the Toronto Union Bank or the post office as their parking lots. But I think the city would make sure that if that was to happen, that the costs would be recouped through leasing it back for a certain amount of, uh, parking spots. But also to discuss the unique relationship that bid has with the city, just so people are aware as well that, um, you know, the parking lot behind the RBC, the parking lots behind Hendridge Drugs, there's two parking lots back there, and there's other areas of the city that bid has worked before with the city. So I think this is a great idea, I think it goes hand in hand with what we're looking at for downtown revitalization. And I think if anyone drives by the Cal Tire building and sees how it's been clipped a few times, trying to go down that back alley, people still try to come out of that back alley, and you cannot see the traffic coming. I know it's, you're not supposed to exit to that area or that entrance there, but people do. So I, I think it's a good thing. I know some people had a few negative comments, but for the majority of people, it's been positive, and I think change is hard on some, so, uh, just bear with us, I think the change will be good.
Okay, thank you for that, Councilor Vroba. Uh, not seeing any further comments. Uh, consideration of bylaws, we have none this evening. Inquiries, Councilor Vroba?
So soon again? Okay, so, basically, I did have a few inquiries, and they all were kind of the same, snow removal, people not taking care of their properties in front. It's very, very icy when you're out walking, so it would be appreciated if people would, um, shovel their snow. Uh, one of them is, again, six hundred block a third street, the city-owned property, has not been done, so if we could just look into that one again. The other thing is the back lanes. So I was talking with our manager, Norm Mack. Some of the back lanes become very reddet, and it's because we are having one of those Some of the back lanes become very redded, and it's because we are having one of those years with extreme temperatures. People have noticed it goes from plus five to minus thirty-seven within twenty-four hours, and that is causing havoc on the back alleys. We're very fortunate compared to cities like Saskatoon, Regina. I have a video on my phone that was featured in the news, and basically Saskatoon and Regina, those cities don't do the residential clearing that we do. So we are very fortunate as a city to have the clean streets. And there's those cities I hear, there's people that can't even get down to their homes. So one of the problems that we are going to have in the next month or so is going to be back alleys. It's going to be hard for some people to get down on some of those days. As a city, we can't send the heavy equipment down those back alleys when it gets too nice out, and we sometimes need to let it dry out. So I guess what I'm asking is for patience. If you have a back alley entrance into your home and you notice it's quite redded, et cetera, then your front street might be the place to be until it dries out a bit. Most people have dealt with that over the years and understand, but there's still a few that we've had a few dry years and they haven't had to experience it. And this is going to be one of those rough springs where we're going to have some back alley issues.
Okay, thank, thank you very much for that explanation, Councilor Groba. Much appreciated and timely. Thank you. Councilor Clark?
Thanks, your worship. Just with that warm day, all of a sudden, the drains were blocked, with people were getting that. Is the, the policy is if they call after hours, there'll be somebody to answer that and refer it to somebody, or is it?
That, that's right, Councilor Clark. Usually, we have City Manager, someone in after hours that will answer the phone.
Yes, your worship, to Councilor Clark. So we do have an answering service that'll do that. I'll have to clarify with Norm Mack if drainage is considered where we will send people out at that time. If it's not causing immediate damage to a property, I'm sure that's something that is done the next morning, but I can get a report for that.
Thank you. Nothing else you're on?
Okay, thank you. Councilor Wallezer?
Thank you, your worship. Tonight, I speak as a parent of children too young to be vaccinated, the parent of a school-aged child who has had his academic and extracurriculars interrupted this past year. I speak as an employee who shows up daily to a workplace that struggles to replace staff due to sick calls. I speak as a healthcare provider who has witnessed the direct impact of COVID on disability and death, but also COVID's impact on our healthcare system's ability to continue to provide timely diagnostics and surgical care. Lastly, I speak as an elected member of council who remains committed to the well-being of our citizens. While it remains the provincial government's responsibility to deliver effective healthcare to our community, it's our role as municipal leaders to continue to advocate for the changes that need to be made and to ensure we have effective and essential services in our community. Moving forward, I ask that we continue to work with Dr. Annabelli, our medical health officer for Southeast Saskatchewan, to ensure we not only address the current COVID situation, but that we also continue to address other healthcare concerns like building the new nursing home, physician recruitment and retention, and any other public health concerns as they arise. I ask that prior to our next council meeting, Dr. Annabelli be contacted to see how we can forward this partnership and to ask if he would again provide us with the city-level data surrounding COVID prior to the end of the mask mandate, March first. In doing so, we can equip our citizens with the best available information as we enter this next phase of the pandemic together.
Okay, thank you for that, Councilor Wallezer. So would that be sufficient if we contact a good doctor, get the information for the next meeting? Would that be okay?
Yes, perhaps similar to the presentation that we received tonight.
Today?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that. Anything else under inquiries?
That's it tonight.
Okay, thank you, City Clerk.
That's a motion on the floor. You need a second.
Do we need a motion to get the information? Okay, you'll make that motion?
Yes, your worship.
Councilor Wallezer, okay, thank you. Councilor Groba? You'll second it? Okay, ready? Any further comments? This is now, we'll get information for the next meeting from the doctor. Okay, ready for the question? All in favor? Carried, thank you. Okay, Councilor Ford?
Thanks, your worship. I just actually had a concern this morning from a business manager of a local business in the community, and it was just regarding the business licenses that get sent out, and I don't know if this has ever been discussed before, but she, she had kind of compared them to what the Chamber sends out in terms of licensing and what has to be displayed. And she, she kind of says that the ones that the City of Estevan sends out are kind of, not pathetic, but they kind of suck because they're on a plain piece of paper. She sent me the picture of them, and she just said it's, it's difficult to display them and be proud of them when they're just sent on normal pieces of paper. The ink on it was a little bit blotchy. I did get a picture of it. It, it just was a little bit unsightly, and she was, she was, she said it's a concern she's had year after year, and was just wondering if there's a different way to print our business licenses or just put it in a more viewable manner so everyone's proud to display their business license in the community.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Ford, for that. I'm sure, City Manager, we could get a little bit better quality paper that could be posted with pride. What's your thoughts?
Thank you, your worship. Yeah, so we have tried to deal with our accounting system software to upgrade and change that. They're not really willing to work with us, but I think we could probably do a secondary process of a different form that is printed. So we'll look into that and bring the cost back to council, what that would be.
Okay, thank you for that. Councilor Cernik?
I have a question about business licenses.
Oh, go, go ahead, Councilor.
Because, again, with business licenses, I had a lady ask what an appropriate time would be for business licenses to be issued. She asked for a business license at the end of January. Today is February fourteenth. She called in to inquire her business license status. She is still not being given the business license. And basically, on the website, the city has, we say, do not sign a lease with the renter where you're going to be operating your business until you have received your business license. So today, she called me and said, can you please tell me what an appropriate amount of time it is for the city to return the business license to me? I said, I will check into that with you. So because you brought up business license, I just thought I'd bring that up now. If we could maybe, when someone applies for a business license, have a response back, because again, they did it by email, have a response back that says it will be replied back to you within two days, three days, maybe fourteen days is the appropriate, maybe twenty-one days is. I think that's a little bit too long, but if we could have an appropriate amount of time, a standard time, and reply back to these people, then I guess they wouldn't be stuck in limbo, because right now, we have a young lady that's been trying to open up her next business, and it's been two weeks, and she has not been able to enter into the contract, and now she feels she's stuck in limbo, so.
Okay, well, thank you, Councilor Groba, for bringing that forward. I'm, I'm sure, City Manager, we can get that rectified. Okay, thank you. Councilor Cernik?
Thank you, your worship. But tonight, I have just more of a compliment to pass along than an inquiry. Just there was a visitor in town this past weekend attending the Bruin Games, and they just felt the need to let us know what a beautiful facility, Affinity Place is, so.
Great. Well, thank you very much for that, and yeah, we're very proud of Affinity Place. Absolutely. Thank you for that. Councilor Frank?
Thanks, your worship. I actually just had one inquiry just, just earlier today here from a resident who's concerned about there's some profanity on a flag that is being flown at a residence in town. It, it might be directed at a certain politician we all don't like, and that's, that's fine. And I know that we've seen that around on some stickers and things like that, but more concerned about the profanity portion of it. Not that we want to take away anybody's rights to, you know, speech or thought or anything like that, but just being aware that it, sometimes children see that, and we don't really want that, so. I know we've mentioned that to City Manager to pass along the bylaw, but just remember when you're, when you're making your statements heard, which we all appreciate and many times agree with, to just remember about the surrounding community that we don't want necessarily that here, so.
Okay, thank you for that, Councilor Frank. City Manager, anything under inquiries? Not this evening. City Clerk? Not this evening. City Treasurer has gone to visit her granddaughter. So I guess, having said all that, do we have a motion to move into committee? Councilor Cernik, seconded by Councilor Frank. All in favor? Carried?
Thank you very much. We stand adjourned.